Okay, it is six o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and begin our regularly scheduled city council meeting. It is June 16th, 2025. So we begin with an invocation offered by Pastor Greg Sigalkov, I believe is the name, if I mispronounce that, please correct me. If you'd please come forward, if everyone would please stand for the prayer, and then remain standing after that for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh Lord, you who soldier in our tent, who shall dwell in your holy hill. He who walks blamelessly and does what is right, and speaks truth in his heart, who does not slander with his tongue, and does not evil to his neighbor, nor takes up reproach against his friend, in whose eyes a vile person is despised, but who honors those who fear the Lord, who swears to his own hurt and does not change, who does not put out his money at interest, and does not take a bribe against the innocent. He who does these things shall never be moved. Heavenly Father, I acknowledge these things as truth, that you bless those who honor you, who seek to do what is right and what is just, and what is honorable in the sight of all people. And so I pray for that, for this meeting tonight. I just, I pray for the city as a whole, Lord, and the city council. May righteousness reign, and may everyone be dedicated to doing the right thing, and may they be blessed for it. May this city be blessed for it, Lord. And I pray that you would protect them from evil forces that want to distract them from doing what is necessary for the safety and the protection of our community. And I pray, Lord, for unity. I pray that there's a unification in purpose to serve this community, Lord, amongst those who have faith in you and everyone, that we would all see that as a common goal. And, Lord, I pray that you would be honored, that the people would know that there is a God in heaven, that the people of this city respect and honor, Lord, and that you will continue to move in a mighty way in this community when we do so. So, Lord, thank you for this time, and I pray, Lord, your guidance and your guiding hand as sovereign Lord, and I pray this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again so much for being here, and I should just note that the pastor at the First Baptist Church here in Caldwell, so thank you so much for all you do. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Counselor Doty.
Here.
Counselor Stodick.
Here.
Counselor Register.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Allgood.
Here.
Counselor Dittenberg.
Here.
Very good. Thank you so much. All council members are present and accounted for. Are there any conflict of interest declarations from any members of the council regarding an item on the agenda this evening? Okay, very good, and that'll move us into our next item, and I think Debbie is on her way to go grab it. It's a long walk out there, so. Yes. We'll figure out an easier way to do this in the future, so. So this is for audience participation, so we'd have a few people signed up in regards to this. So we will begin with Mark Bezwick. We do appreciate you being here. So, Mark, if you please come forward, if you could just state your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Mark Bezwick. My address is 15322 Sequoia Grove Way in the city of Caldwell. Excuse me. Mayor Wagner and members of the city council, my name is Mark Bezwick, and I've been a resident of Caldwell since December of 2018. Prior to moving to Caldwell, I lived in Nampa for 19 years. I must say that where I live now has been much more enjoyable than my time in Nampa. Last summer, the streets in the Sienna Hills subdivision, which I am a resident, were chip sealed. Although our streets were smooth asphalt and in excellent condition, a chip seal was placed over the top of the asphalt. The streets in the subdivision were then left in this condition, and a fog coat to seal the chip in place was not applied. Since this time, our streets have been a mess. It went from, I went from living in a very nice and quiet street to now a gravel road. The chip seal never completely sealed and continues to come apart daily. Myself and my neighbors pick up chips on our driveways, in our garages, on sidewalks, gutter, lawns, and inside our homes. I contacted Mayor Wagner about this issue, and he directed me to Mr. Bruce Mills, who is head of the street department for the city of Caldwell. Bruce was kind enough to come visit our subdivision, inspect our streets, and meet with myself and approximately 30 to 40 of my neighbors who share my same concern. He stated three things during his visit. One, the chip seal condition on our streets was the worst he had ever seen in his 25 years' experience dealing with street maintenance. Two, the chip used by the contractor was the wrong size and did not adhere properly. Three, without a top coat applied to our streets, without a top coat applied to our streets, they would continue to deteriorate over time. He committed to raising our concerns with city officials and provided myself with this, and said he would provide me with a response. Last month, on the 12th, I emailed him requesting an update as to the needed and requested fog coating of our streets. He responded the following day. He stated in his email that the contractor chip sealing streets this year, 2025, in subdivisions throughout the city would be placing a fog coat on top of the chip. However, the streets completed in 2024, which includes mine, would not be receiving any further fog coating. He said he was sympathetic to our concerns, but all he could do was offer to continue sweeping our streets on a regular basis. On May 29th, I forwarded Mr. Mills' email to Mayor Wagner requesting the city send a contractor back to Sienna Hills subdivision and complete the chip seal process that was left incomplete last year. I am here now today to request respectfully to the entire city council that that takes place. That is my statement. This is a baggie of chip seal. I went out this afternoon to give you some idea as to what myself and my neighbors deal with. This is about seven to 10 days of chip seal that I found in my driveway, in my garage, in the gutter, that came off in the last seven, 10 days, which I sweep up, because if not, then I find it in my garage, which I had epoxy sealed when I moved in, and will begin to deteriorate with the grinding of this chip seal. If you'd like to see it, I'd be more than happy to leave it here. I also have, if you would like to see, just to let you know that I'm not making anything up, copies of emails that I've had correspondence with Mr. Mills and our good mayor here. So I'll leave that for you if anyone's interested, but once again, I respectfully request that our issue get addressed and get fixed for me and my neighbors. I live on a thoroughfare, which gets a lot of traffic. Many of my neighbors do not. They live in cul-de-sacs, areas where there's not as many cars going down. Mine is not as bad as theirs, but still nonetheless, it needs to be done. Something needs to take place and looked after so that we can get this rectified and move forward. Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Yeah, and thank you for coming down. Appreciate. Good to see you put a face to the emails on that. So I did, I actually drove through Sienna Hills the other day.
I've seen you a couple places. I didn't want to bother you at a ballgame or anything like that. Your time is yours.
No, but appreciate you coming and bringing that to attention. So obviously, that, obviously, there's a cost with that, and so as the council's working through that budget, we can nail down what that cost would be to go out and do like a fog coat in your neighborhood in addition to those others, and see if there's some funds provided in that. But do appreciate you coming down and making that.
Question. If the contractor didn't use the right material, why are they not coming back and fixing it?
So that, I would need to address that or talk to Mr. Mills or have him come in and answer that question on that, in that regards, so.
Okay. Well, I guess that's my question. If you told him that the contractor made a mistake, and then the email says, "Sorry, we'll do it different next time," shouldn't we be holding the contractor responsible?
So, I mean, we'd have to look at the contract itself and see what was expected and required, and get into those details.
Can we do that?
Yes, definitely.
That was a question of many of my neighbors, who were much more vocal than I was, but if it's not done right.
Yeah.
And like I said, Mr. Mills is a fine public servant. He took the time to come out at eight o'clock in the morning to my place and witnessed it, and was not at all impressed by what he saw.
Yeah, it would seem to me that, I mean, maybe that's a good step, is to start with the contract and see if there's any fallback on the contractor before, you know, and then figuring out what's next.
Yeah, definitely. Counselor Doty, and then Counselor Stodick.
Mr. Mayor, I agree. It seems like by now, unless you have an answer, and we just don't want to discuss it here in public in case there's pending litigation, but when was your first question sent? What date was that on?
I inquired of him back in March of, with Mr. Mills, in March of this year. And he came out in March, on or around the 20th, 21st, came out. And then I was gone for the entire month of April, so when I got back in town, I emailed him about six weeks, seven weeks later to see what he could tell me. That's when I received his response that, and his explanation of what was gonna happen in 2025 as opposed to what took place in 2024. My understanding is everything gets fog coated this year on all the streets to get chip sealed in all the residential neighborhoods, according to him. So going forward, there's gonna be a fog coat down on the residential streets here in Caldwell.
But not yours.
But not mine. Something even more interesting that I found, there is a subdivision that was just west of mine. I live on Indiana. Just on the west side of Indiana, there's a subdivision there that is only about a year and a half old, and those streets were chip sealed. I have, my street, I don't believe, needed it, and I've been there for six years, six and a half. They chip sealed a subdivision that was only a year and a half old. That made no sense to me whatsoever. So I don't think the process of what we're chip sealing in this city, when you chip seal a neighborhood that's a year and a half old, that's brand-new asphalt, in my opinion, and it's covered with chip seal.
Yeah, and I can't speak to that. We'd have to have Bruce speak to how that all works. However, I'm more concerned if we haven't looked at the contract already in three months, but if we have and we don't do the seal code or the fog code, is that what you're talking about? If that's required, so I guess we would need an education or a class on that, which is probably longer than tonight, but.
Yeah, according to his email, it says the city chip seals in June. They start on June 2nd, and they come back and lay down the fog coat in July.
Okay.
So it's.
But we didn't.
It just start, the process is just start according to his email, and I can only speak to what he said to me. I don't know anything, but that's when it happens. If I remember right, I think ours was, I can't remember the exact date and time, but it was in the summer last year that our street was chip sealed.
Yeah, they're always done in that same time, and this is the first year that we are doing the fog coating and bringing in Mr. Mills and talking to him about, how can we approve it? That was one of the things. So that, this is the first year that the city's ever done that, so. Counselor Stodick?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just think in our fine attorney, Mr. Glass, should probably look into the contract too and see what it says relative to what they're responsible for.
Absolutely, we can give the contract a look. Thank you.
Thank you again. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate it. Jean, so if you could, again, just state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes as well.
Jean Kreidbring, as I stand before you, unafraid to speak, not a coward, I've said repeatedly that you have a difficult job. The wait is truly burdensome, especially as you deal with the budget woes. Putting that aside, though, again, I'm going to express my concerns for the one-sided rules, the lack of civility, and Caldwell's black eye. When we are allowed public comments, we are allotted three minutes, and we may not address any of the counselors personally by name. Again, I am wondering why the counselors aren't held to the same set of guidelines. Why are council members allowed to publicly humiliate Caldwell citizens in their rants? Why aren't they stopped and asked to speak in private the same way we have been stopped and addressed? As a teacher, I would have been reprimanded or even fired if I ever spoke in that manner to the parents of my students. I am imploring you once again to act in a professional manner, even if you are angry at a citizen. Your actions and words resonate across the media, giving Caldwell a black eye. The second issue centers around these comments from a counselor. Quote, "We as city council members need to embrace the higher density, and if we don't have higher density, we will have sprawl. And we also must get comfortable with smaller lot sizes. We need to have smaller lot sizes. We also need to get comfortable with, if there's an acre of bare land, that we can put a 12-plex or 24-plex on it. As long as we have automobiles, as long as people like sizable houses, and as long as people like scenery, we're fighting an uphill battle. We need to get people out of their cars, we need to get them into smaller lots, and convince them that living in the city is okay." End quote. Intriguing take on your job as council members. Do all of you support this thought? What I am hearing is that people need to walk, which would be getting them out of their cars, and the counselors want to pack more into the city limits, and people need to embrace those postage stamp yards. What about how this higher density affects the roads, traffic, and infrastructure? We all have choices. I chose to move to Caldwell. I chose to finally retire. I chose to ask you to be kind and professional. You can choose to vote no. You do not have to embrace higher density, especially if it doesn't fit with the current neighborhood. We do not need to fill each acre of bare land with more high-density housing, and you do not need to see how many people you can cram into the city limits. Thanks for your time.
And could you state your address for the record?
15855 Orchard Avenue.
Very good. Thank you so much. And next is Robert and Nancy Canary. And if you could just state your name and address also for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to address the council.
My name's, excuse me, my name's Bob Canary. I live at 1611 West Mountview Avenue in Napa. I run a firework stand at Albertson's in Blaine. And I'm just asking that you consider letting us open on the 5th of July. The state says that municipalities have, yeah, the ability to go five days of the 10-day span. It's just an opportunity for us as a small business to make a little bit more money, and that's about it.
Very good. So does the city code not allow it to sell the day after? Is that, do you know, or?
That is correct. Mr. Mayor, the city code does not allow for that, and I know, Mr. Canary, I believe you asked this last year as well, for an extension of the timeframe, and at that point, the fire marshal was consulted and was an objection to that request as well. So that wasn't granted last year.
I know I asked this year, and we talked about it, and I'm just asking the council to consider it.
Right.
Because you do have the ability to do that as a council. You can extend the season for fireworks accordingly. You have, the state says you have a five-day swing either way. And it's just an opportunity for us as a small business to make, you know, a little bit more money staying open on the 5th. 5th is a Saturday this year. Our company's offering discounts and stuff for the, for the, if you haven't done that before. I don't know how worthwhile it would work. It might build into more income for the city. I don't know. It'd be the first year, but I'm just asking that you consider it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you bringing that forward, and we can definitely bring that back as like an information item to the council and have the fire marshal to answer questions and things of that nature. So definitely something that they can discuss at a future council meeting.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I agree with that. If, depending on what we're trying to accomplish by that, if all the communities surrounding us are selling them on the 5th of July, I'm not sure we're accomplishing anything by saying.
Yeah, Boise County does.
Fire prevention, so. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. And that is all. Signed up for our audience participation, so we do have an amendment, if I'm not mistaken, to the consent.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to move item number three from the consent calendar to new business with further discussion.
So a motion from Counselor Doty and a second from Counselor Stodick for amendment to the consent calendar as noted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion passes. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the amended consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
A motion from Counselor Doty and a second from Counselor Stodick. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, with that, voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, the voting is closed, and that motion does pass unanimously. We do not have any old business, so that'll move us right into new business, and we might as well just go ahead and take up that first item that was moved down, so I don't forget about it. So that would be item number three, that was moved from consent calendar regarding the appointment of George Decker, Sajia Fletcher, Carlos Hernandez, and Brent Williams to the Downtown Parking Advisory Board. So those individuals, so just to let you know who they are, how they came about on that, and then if there are any questions, we can try to answer those as best as possible. So Mr. George Decker, and Debbie can help me on this, if I do get any of these wrong, is the owner of.
Share Stories.
Share Stories, of Share Stories, which is the bookstore right on Kimball Avenue. Sajia Fletcher, and she is the, I believe, the owner, I know that her mom, or I think she does now, of.
Rubyot.
Rubyot on Sixth Avenue, I believe is where they're at now. Carlos Hernandez, and Ophelia, I see Steve or somebody who can help. So Carlos Hernandez had reached out to Ophelia, I believe. He works for Probst Electric, lives in Jackson Apartments, I believe, and had an interest in being involved in this committee, so he'd reached out to Ophelia to get more information on that. And then Brent Williams is the new general manager, if I'm not mistaken, at Indian Creek Steakhouse. So those are the individuals that had made application to be on that Downtown Parking Advisory Board. So a pretty good mix. They're not all in favor of the parking meters we had. I think, as you're aware, some did come out and speak against them, so it does give some different viewpoints on that advisory board, which I think is very important to have, so you get better discussion in that regard. So that is who those individuals are, so I don't know if there's additional questions on any of them, or if not, if there's a motion for this item.
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Register.
Thank you. I had asked for it to come off the consent calendar, just because I think when we're appointing people to any committee that we should probably have some sort of background, not just the parking committee, but all of them. So I appreciate that, and I'll make a motion to approve those names for that committee.
Do you have a second? It's a motion from Counselor Register and a second from, I believe, yes, Counselor Allgood. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, we can do a voice vote on this, correct?
Yes, you can.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that motion passes. And that'll now move us into our, what's listed as our first item of new business. This is an action item for an annexation. Actually, this item has been asked to be continued to July 7th of 2025. Is that correct? Okay, very good. So, and was this at the request of staff or of the applicant?
Mayor, that was the request of the applicant.
Of what?
The applicant.
Applicant, okay, very good. Thank you so much. With the applicant's request to continue this to a date sort of July 7th here in these chambers at 6:00 PM, do we have a motion to continue this item to that date and time?
So moved.
And a second, a motion from Counselor Doty and a second from Counselor Stodick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that motion passes. So that item will not be heard tonight. So again, if you were here for the, is there a name for that subdivision? Oh, yes, Spring House Town subdivision. So if you're here for that annexation, PUD, and preliminary plat, that will not be heard this evening, but will be heard at the July 7th city council meeting. So that now moves us on to action item number two, which is a request from Tamara Thompson of the Land Group. Good to see you, Tamara. On behalf of Home Depot USA for a short plat to divide their 17-acre parcel into four commercial light industrial lots. So that will go to staff for presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Katie Wright, Associate Planner, 205 South Sixth Avenue. Before you tonight is a short plat for the property where Home Depot is currently being constructed on Highway 2026, SSP 2502. The project is 16.79 acre parcel located southwest of Highway 2026 and Smead Parkway. The site has frontage along both Highway 2026 and Smead Parkway. The project's currently surrounded by commercial to the north and east, with industrial to the south and residential to the northwest and east. There are two developments within a one-mile radius of the subject property that are either actively under construction or have been approved for entitlements. The application before you tonight is for a short plat of the subject parcel shown in red. The subject site was originally annexed into the city with the C3 zone and was rezoned to M1 in 2022. There is a development agreement associated with this application, instrument number 2022007464. The development agreement has additional uses that are permitted slash prohibited on this site outside of the land use schedule and the code, and there was no proposed development at the time. The property is zoned M1. The purpose of the M1 general industrial zone is to designate areas by zoning procedures in accordance with the comprehensive plan for wholesaling and distributing activities, general manufacturing warehouses, research and development centers, processing and assembly-type manufacturing, and other similar industrial uses, commercial uses, which have been deemed to function efficiently and harmoniously with industrial uses in this zone may be permitted in accordance with the chapter. All future uses proposed for this site shall be in compliance with the development agreement and the land use schedule and the code. And the comp plan place type is an employment center, and proposed development is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan. The applicant is proposing this site to be platted as four lots for commercial and industrial uses. The proposed development project has been analyzed for compliance with city codes and policies, and staff finds the proposed development is in compliance with all bulk standards for lot size, frontage, and all other zoning and subdivision ordinances. The setbacks, specific uses, parking, et cetera, shall be reviewed at the time of the building permits. The proposed development will have adequate site access, and all utilities are available or will be available as outlined in the engineering staff report. Public agencies were notified and asked to provide comments. Staff has received no comments from public agencies or the public, and staff recommends that if council approves the request, that such request is subject to the conditions as specified in the findings of facts, conclusions of law, and order of decision, and I stand for any questions.
Very good. Thank you so much. Any questions from the council for staff? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Do we have the, oh, yeah.
Got you before you ran off. So are we changing the zoning for this parcel, or is it staying the same?
Mayor and counselor, it's staying M1. The development agreement does allow more commercial uses than the typical M1 might, so it would be in alignment with Home Depot and uses that may complement that.
And so there's no, there's no. And so there's no, there's no additional information at this time? We're just simply changing, I don't even know what I'm saying here.
Mayor and Counselor, essentially, this application is just to plat the parcel so that it would be able to have four parcels rather than just the one where the Home Depot is right now. It would just subdivide three more lots out of it.
Got you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, there's only one person signed up to speak on this matter. So Tamara, that would be you. So if you could just state your name and address for the record, then you'll have up to 10 minutes, if you need them all, for your presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Tamara Thompson. I'm with the Land Group. Our offices are at 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle. I have a quick presentation for you. Staff covered most of it. Katie's been great to work with. This is the Home Depot subdivision. It's, we're processing it as a short plat. And just to, there's always a confusion around that term. And what that means is it's just the processing is just a little bit quicker, that we submit both a preliminary plat and a final plat concurrently. We submit those together. So the processing is just a little bit faster. So it's considered short, but it still goes through both a preliminary and a final plat. So as Katie said, the property is located here on south side of Highway 2026 and the west side of Smeed Parkway. And Home Depot is under construction. They currently have, are on schedule to have their temporary occupancy to start putting product in the store in August of this year. So, and then they're hoping for their grand opening in October. So moving right along, landscaping should be starting this next, this next week. This is the preliminary plat. So Home Depot itself is on one parcel, and then in that northeast corner of the, of the site is three additional parcels for three additional tenants. We do not know who those tenants are at this time. There won't be any additional accesses for those. They will use internal driveways, and all the utilities for those are being constructed at this time. So no new, nothing new has to happen. This was all pre-planned as far as where those pads would be for the initial construction drawings. So everything's there. We're just basically putting lines on the ground. Just to kind of show you, because it's hard to see where those are, I just highlighted where those, where those three parcels are. The, the size of those, the corner one is roughly 1.5 acres, and then the other two are just a little bit over an acre each. And then the Home Depot parcel is just a little under 13 acres. And then the final plat, and then this is the one that gets recorded, looks like this. And one of the main reasons for this is the easements that the city needs for both sewer and water running through the site. We can create those easements with the final plat, and so we'll have those, you can see on this sheet. We've read the staff report, and we agree with staff's analysis. And the, the request complies with all city codes and policies, and we respectfully request your approval tonight.
Very good. Thank you so much. Any questions, Tamara? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, as mentioned, Tamara was the only one that was signed up to speak on this matter, so I stand for a motion to close the public testimony portion of this hearing.
So moved. Second.
A motion from Council Stodak and a second from Council Doughty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So that now turns it over to the council. If you do have any questions for staff, they're available. Any discussion amongst yourself or any motions as well. Counselor?
I'm ready to make a motion unless there's any discussion, Mr. Mayor.
I think you're good.
All right. Based on the findings and facts and conclusions of law, the Caldwell City Council hereby orders that case number SPP 2502, a request for short plat approval, is approved with the conditions as outlined within the staff report.
Second.
Motion from Council Doughty and a second from Council Denver for approval of the requested short plat. Any discussion on that motion? With that, voting is then open at this time. All votes are cast. The voting is closed, and that motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. That now moves us on to item number three. And this is for a resolution accepting engagement letters from Langston and Associates for appraisal services related to the properties located in the Caldwell Event Center. And I believe Mr. Jenkins has have this to present.
All right, Mayor, Council, thank you so much for your time this evening. Here to discuss engagement letters that we received on behalf of appraisals for three properties in the city of Caldwell. The first property is 2218 Griffiths Parkway. The second one is 501 Main Street, and the third is 111 South 22nd Avenue. And if approved, the cost per appraisal is approximately $5,500, bringing the total to $16,500. And I just want to showcase the three properties here. I apologize, they're so small. But the first one is actually, thank you, Elijah, I appreciate you zooming in there, is 501 Main Street is in downtown Caldwell. It's on the corner of Fifth and Main. Down there, it's owned by Canyon County. The second, and I'll let you pull that up, Elijah, I know you're working your magic, is 111 South 22nd Avenue. It's on 22nd Avenue and Stock Trail Road in the Caldwell Event Center. So that building, I apologize, 501 Main Street's approximately 6,000 square feet. This building here is approximately 43,000 square feet. And then the third property is 2218 Griffiths Parkway. There it is, and it's approximately 20 acres there. And if you all recall from a joint meeting we held with Canyon County on April 30th, 2025, it was noted that no formal appraisals were available for each property under consideration there. I just wanted to also note that Canyon County is doing, they're doing separate appraisals on the properties out there. So in this effort for the cities, from the city's perspective, it'll allow us to evaluate not only their proposals or their appraisals, but just give us a better idea from the standing of negotiations and future discussions, knowing what the market value is for each respective property out there. So in preparation for the joint meeting on April 30th, I had conducted a couple of meetings with two brokers in the area, in the Boise area. They provided broker's opinions on the values of the land. The broker's opinion, just to remind you all, on that 20-acre piece of property there is approximately $5.9 million. And then the other two assets, the two buildings, 111 South 22nd Avenue and then 501 Main Street, those buildings together were valued at $5.6 million. So that gives us a general understanding, but these appraisals will be a lot more precise and more formal, and give us a very specific understanding of those values there. So all that considered, just want to lay that out. They would, these engagement letters would give us a 30-minute window to receive these appraisals, as long as we provided the necessary information to Langston and Associates to proceed with the, with the each corresponding appraisal. And that is all I have, and I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Counselor Doughty?
Thank you. Stephen, how's it going tonight?
Going well, thank you.
Good. So how many properties, if the agreement goes through with the county, and maybe it has, are they appraising? Not the city, but how many are the, how many properties has the county agreed to, to appraise?
Mayor, Council Doughty, I do not know the answer to that question. I do know they're holding, they're conducting separate appraisals. I just don't know exactly which properties they're going to be appraising.
Are any of those properties that they're appraising on by the city?
That I am not certain of. And Mayor, I don't know if you have any clarity on that. I know you've had some discussions with the county on their appraisals that they're conducting, but I have not received that information.
Yeah. So, and I haven't talked to them lately about it, but it should be the three parcels that were presented this evening. So that way, and I know it's two different appraisals for the same property, but the concern was is one appraiser being picked over another. Those could, would our numbers come back way different if we did it than the county? So the thought was if we both had our appraisals, to just to ensure that it was an accurate number in that regard. So it should be the same three
Okay.
Parcels.
Great, thank you.
Right, and it's okay. So let's, let's transition to there. So how many of the three parcels do we own?
So that would be one, if I'm not mistaken. Steve?
Yeah, so we just sold the 20 acres there, and then the other two we do not own.
So my question is, why are we paying for an appraisal of county property and not just our own property, if we agree with an appraisal at all? It benefits us none as taxpayers to pay for an appraisal for the county to have that information about their buildings?
Yeah, Mayor, Council Doughty, I know internally the discussions revolved around the comparison factor. So to be able to compare the values of the appraisals from the county, along with the, with the city, just to make sure that there was a level of veracity with the process as a whole, so that we understood what the market, what the market rate was for each corresponding property.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Stephen. I just have a tough time paying for appraisals for the county, right? We already talked about the budget woes. We don't need to go through all of that again. And here we are, two of the properties don't even belong to the city, and here we are being asked to chip in again. So I have a real issue with that. So thank you.
Yeah. And I would just kind of add, that's the reason why it's before council tonight to decide at the, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Steve, please, but at that meeting, I believe is brought up by at least one council member, maybe a few, of wanting to know more precise on the property values of all three of these. And so the reason that all three of these are being shown by both sides is does that give more comfort level to the council to know that these appraisals were done by an agency chosen by the council and not by the county? If the council would prefer that the city just paid for the one that they own and the county paid for the two, I don't think the county will have any issue with that. I don't want to speak for them, but I don't think they would. But yeah, so that's kind of why, the reason that this is here to get direction from the council of, do you want to proceed with what was discussed at that meeting of trying to get more exact prices on these properties? And if so, do you want to do all three? Do you want to just do one? It's really up to the council on how you'd like to proceed on that. So is that more or less fairly accurate?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for clarifying, Mayor. And I will add one more additional consideration here with the property that's owned by the city, the 20 acres there. And speaking with both brokers that I consulted with, it was difficult to assess the value of it in the market because of those existing deed restrictions on the property, based on the donation from the Griffith family to the city years ago. That deed restriction is quite prohibitive, so it just, it was hard, difficult to evaluate. So I think having this appraisal perhaps will give us a better idea of, even with those existing deed restrictions, what the value is. Because again, those brokers were struggling, trying to get a really good grasp of what the market would bear for that.
Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief. Again, Stephen, I don't want to miss an opportunity to thank you for all you do for the city, and you're much appreciated. I am still quite struggling even at the notion of this land swap, and for a couple of reasons. After our joint session, everyone I know that addressed me on it, many of them businessmen, lawyers, bankers, judges, all said, there is no upside for the city in this. And I still don't see an upside for the city in it. I'm sure there's more discussion to be had before decisions are made, but at this point, I'm just not in favor of this movement at all. And this was the county's request of us to come and make this land swap. So if they're interested in pursuing it, I think it should be upon the county to do two appraisals and come back to us. And those two appraisals, along with these assets that you have, that gave you a ballpark figure, we could move forward from there. But I'm not in favor, especially in a tight budget year. We're scrambling for money right now. We're trying to figure out how to pay for everything on our agenda. We're up against a wall with requests and demands being made on money we don't have. I'm not in favor of spending $17,000 on this.
Counselor Denver?
Mr. Mayor, Stephen, thank you again. I appreciate all you do. You got a lot of balls juggling in the air. And I go to a lot of meetings, and you're talking about a lot of different projects. So I appreciate all you do for this great city. So a couple questions. The main question that I have, and maybe, maybe you're not the right person to answer this, maybe the mayor is, is there still serious negotiations going on about a land swap? Or are these just, maybe it may happen again in the next year, or are we, what do you know about the seriousness of what we're discussing?
Yeah, Mayor, Council Denver, thank you for that question. In listening to the meeting, really listening to it again after the meeting was conducted on the 30th of April, I was able to gather that, I think, these necessary steps were, these were the questions that were looming, as far as what the, what the land values were and what we would do with the buildings. I know that question was posed as well. So those things are still being considered. I think this just gives us a more, a better position with negotiations moving forward. So it advances discussions, if that makes sense. I think right now, there's just this waiting period to understand what the values are of the properties and give us, us in the county, quite frankly, a better idea of the valuations out there first before things proceed.
So the next question that I have, and maybe this is a question for Ray Lynn, is there a professional services line item somewhere that this would be paid for out of this year? Or is this something that is going to be put into next year's budget? How, because of, how is this paid for?
So this, this line item, as I've told you before, I try to look at every budget before I actually ask for fund balance. And this would be a fund balance request within general fund. There is not available budget to move around to cover this request. And so this would be, it'd be asking for, similar to contingency, but we've already used all of our contingency this year on other items earlier in the year. So this would be the, an additional request of fund balance.
So Stephen, a couple, another question. So when we're talking about, I've had things appraised and things looked at, when you're looking at a square building with four walls and a roof, the appraiser comes in and does square footage and everything. And so is the cost to appraise the 501 Main Street and the 511 22nd, are those considerably lower costs to have appraised than something that's difficult like Griffith Park?
Yeah, Mayor, Council Denver, they're all equally priced. So I guess that, to answer your question, although they're very different in the configuration of each building, and of course, the land, they're each $5,500. So certainly not, Langston Associates apparently isn't taking into account all those other factors that were aforementioned, such as the deeds, deed restrictions, and the size and scope of each property.
So, Mr. Mayor, this question is for you. So what if we say, yeah, we're going to go ahead and move with the $16,500? Is there any guarantee that the county's going forward with their appraisal, or do they just back out and go, no, we trust what the city's numbers are?
Great question. So there's no guarantee. Last discussion I had with them was that they were still very in favor of moving forward. Just I haven't heard anything different from them. But again, that doesn't require them to go and get their appraisal like they were planning in doing so on that. So there's no, it's just, I guess, going off of best faith, good faith effort on their, on their behalf to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Allgood?
I believe Council Register was ahead of me.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. So I just, I guess I had a couple of questions. It sounds like this is coming up as sort of a safeguard for the city to make sure that the appraisals that the county does are accurate, so that we're kind of all on the same page, right? Like another comparison. I'm not necessarily against that. I think that's probably a really good idea to have something of our own that says how much it's worth, like you said. I think that's probably really smart. I'm just wondering if now's the time, or if we wait until county does it? As I think Counsel Williams said, if they want to move forward with this, and they do their appraisal and comes back, and we're like, hmm, that seems a little low, can we then do our own appraisal at that time instead of committing to one before? Even though I think it's smart to be prepared and have something in hand, I just wonder with the concerns that we've heard about budgets and things like that, if now's the right time. In talking to Roger Brooks, who we know was coming on, I would like to kind of loop him in on some of the opinion down there, because I do believe that he thinks that having the county on one side and the city on the other side is a good idea for our planning. So that would be, I'm hearing some of the concerns about our planning. So that would be, I'm hearing some of the concerns about whether we're doing it or not. So I just, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. But I think it might be a good, I think it might be something that we wait on until we have serious movement and we see what the appraisal comes back at anyway, if we even need to do it. But then my last question was, is this company the only company that we've spoken to about doing an appraisal, or do we take bids for something like that? It seems a little high to me. And it does seem like the land area would be more expensive than the typical sort of commercial building. So I'm just wondering if there would be somebody who would come in lower to do the jobs.
Sure. Mayor, Counsel Register, thank you for your comments, and thank you all for your comments. Really appreciate your input and feedback. I would say timing is relative. I know that, so this appraisal group, this real estate company, was approached on the premise of completing it expeditiously. So they would be able to do it, obviously, in thirty days from now, if we were to fulfill the obligations of the engagement letters and sign the contracts and everything. And I get them the information they need, they can move forward with that. So I think if we had more time, if we had a little bit more of a buffer with that, we could certainly put more feelers out to see if there are any other appraisal companies that perhaps make more sense. I've done appraisals in the past. This is, it seems to me at least, to be in the ballpark of what the market would bear, but we can certainly take a closer look at that if we have more time to fulfill the appraisal.
Because you would kind of think that the appraisal for the land that has all the enclosures on it would be a little more expensive than on some of the, you know, at least the building here downtown. At least that's how it would seem. But maybe they've put together a package, I don't know. Or maybe they feel like they're, because of the rush, you know, that kind of thing. But I'm still a little bit confused too, as to where we are in this process. And are we, you know, are we moving forward? Are we not? Like, where are we at in these discussions? And so for me, it just seems like something that maybe could wait. And maybe we could get some bids on it, if that's possible, or we see what the appraisals come back at and then, you know, kind of go from there. Because I'm sure you guys have some kind of idea what you think it's worth. And so it would be, you know, I think it would be interesting to see what they think it's worth first.
Sure. Yeah, makes sense.
Counsel Allgood.
Thank you. I expressed the same opinion when we had our meeting before. No matter what the value of 501 Main, why would the city of Caldwell be interested in that building? That's a question. I mean, does anybody, why would we want that building? And let me just add to that. You know, I am certainly willing to continue to explore this trade of that particular property out there by the fair building. But, you know, we work out a contract where they provide us police and fire dispatch for a certain amount of time, because right now they want four hundred plus thousand dollars or whatever. You know, that's money we could add back into our emergency services budget, or something of that nature. Like I said, I'm willing to work out options. I just, I don't know why we would want that old dinosaur of a building. I don't know why, you know, why we would accept that in trade for our park out there. Like I said, I'm not saying no to, I just don't want 501 Main Street.
Counsel Stoddick.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I really think we ought to hold off on this too, especially concerning the challenges that we have in the budget this year. And as importantly too, I think that I would feel more comfortable when we see something coming out of Roger Brooks's consulting deal on what exactly he's got plans for this, because, you know, the county might like it or might not, I don't know. But I think we should wait on this too also. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any, Counsel Dittenberg?
I have one other, not necessarily a question, but a comment before whatever motion is made. Is there any benefit to us getting the appraisal on our parcel of property on Griffith? And we have our appraisal in our back pocket. And we just say, okay, we've done, we've done our part, we've gone a third of the way. And is there any benefit to that, Stephen, or is this an all or nothing package?
Yeah, Mayor, Counsel Dittenberg, good question. It is not an all or nothing package. Certainly, they're all demarcated individually. So if we chose to proceed with one appraisal over the other, they're separate contracts. So we can, we can look at that option if that was desirable to the council. Hearing your feedback, certainly, I appreciate all of it. I have ideas for different assets that are out there. I know urban renewal could be a tool that could be implemented to help improve buildings that are in this area, or even the one downtown with 501 Main Street. And there are some options there, but nothing definitive as far as what each asset would represent. But just to answer your question long-windedly, we can certainly move forward with twenty-two eighteen, independent of the others.
And you could, and correct me, Steve or Mr. Class, if I'm wrong in this, you could stipulate in there as well that it wouldn't move forward until a similar resolution was passed by the county, ensuring that the other two were going to be appraised. Could you do something like that if you wanted to?
Yeah, I believe the city would have a lot of latitude to be able to negotiate with that and put in what we wanted to do on these, certainly.
Yeah, and that's just if you do decide to go that way on that. So, Counsel, I think Williams and then Counsel Doughty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm prepared to make a motion. Based on all the comments and discussion here, I move that resolution number two thirty-one dash twenty-five be denied.
We have a second?
Second.
Let's have a motion from Counsel Williams and a second from Counsel Stoddick, and this is for denial of the resolution. So again, a yes, pretty much a yes vote means no. So a yes vote is in favor of the motion of denial of this resolution. So any discussion? Okay, with that voting is open and closed. So all votes are cast and that motion passes unanimously. And that moves us into number four. So this is just a housekeeping item for a bill and ordinance, Bill forty-six, ordinance thirty-six ninety-eight, for the annexation of Pasero Ridge Number Four in the Caldwell Municipal Irrigation District. Counsel Williams.
Mr. Mayor, I move to sponsor Bill forty-six, ordinance number thirty-six ninety-eight, move for its passage by title only.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's a motion from Counsel Williams and a second from Counsel Doughty for passage of Bill forty-six, ordinance thirty-six ninety-eight, and move for its passage by title only. Any discussion? With that, voting is open. And all, almost all, there we are. All votes are cast, the voting is closed, and that motion passes unanimously. That'll move us into item number five. This is approved request for a fee waiver. This was removed from the consent calendar for a fee waiver in the amount of four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents for the Co-County Youth Baseball Light Night Tournament to be held June twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth. I don't know.
It was me, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm just looking for council input as well as your own on the process. We just had budget hearings, and if you take the name out of it and the emotion out of it about raising fees to cover our budget, and looking at that as being one of options, I believe Ray Lynn gave four examples of what we could do. But again, we're right back to the budget, and here we are, we're going to waive this fee, or that's what's suggested here. So one, what is the process of someone that wants their fee waived? Can, maybe Debbie or the mayor can explain what that process is?
I'm going to depend on Ray Lynn as well on this one, but the city clerk's office and the finance director worked together this last year to formulate an application process for the nonprofits and those from school entities that were reserving our public facilities. And then Ray Lynn, I'll let it go from there for you.
So within, there's a policy and then this application. And within this policy, it states that there's a maximum amount, and then there's only certain fees that this qualifies for. It's not all fees. But for nonprofit, you can get up to twenty-five percent, and for a school, up to fifty percent, that's waived. And I know I've talked to Oscar about updating that policy a little bit, because it, since we put it in place, we have not revised it. But it's very limited with the use. We don't automatically have every nonprofit that fills that out or is, and using those park fees, or O'Connor Fieldhouse or anything like that. But it is something that I think other cities do offer for some of the partners within the city, especially with school districts and nonprofits. And it does not apply to all fees. It's very limited use on those fees.
Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up here. Clearly, I support youth sports, so I want to make sure that's in the equation. I have two daughters that are active in youth sports, so it's not about that for me. And I guess I was just looking for guidance from the council and the mayor as to what direction they want to go. If we're going to argue about raising fees, but yet turn around in the very next council meeting and say, well, let's cut this fee though, just the feel of what others think. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Allgood.
Yeah, I just want to confirm, if this is our current policy, that we do this, then I feel like we need to follow policy until we can change our policy, if that's what we feel we need to do. Are we currently, is that currently what we, what we're offering, Ray Lynn?
That is the current policy. It was passed by city council last year. And so I've already had talks with Oscar about revising it a little bit, but yes, that is our current policy.
Okay, I would recommend we follow our policy.
Counsel Dittenberg?
Mr. Mayor, so Oscar, I have a question for you. If it's a matter of policy, then why does it come before council? It might suggest that it's not a matter of policy.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Dittenberg, my understanding is the current policy is that each time these will come before council for a fee waiver or a reduction. And one of the things that we're discussing is a one-time policy decision for the council to make on set reductions for qualifying entities. So if the council wants to waive fees or give a lower fee to certain groups that meet certain criteria, we'll set that in the policy. When there's an application and it meets it, it'll be done. So the council would just decide that once when you set the policy. As what we have now is, every time one comes along, it's coming in front of the council for approval. So that was the efficiency measure that we're looking at to implement, that once the council decides if you want to have fees, we'll set those in. Then it'll be an administrative matter rather than a decision before the council.
So then the other question that I have, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Is, it looks like here we're being asked to consider a four hundred and eighteen dollar waiver of a fee. Is that only twenty-five percent of the total cost for using the facility? Or is that a full fee waiver?
It's a percentage.
Yeah, I'm going to have to defer that to the clerk and the finance.
It is a percentage, and it's for two different fees. So one's for the use of the park facility for recreation purposes, and the other one is a special event permit that's required to have the event. So it's two different fees combined.
Counsel Stoddick.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. The only problem I have with this, and I'll probably get phone calls and emails on it, I'm not against youth baseball, but anytime we waive these fees, somebody else has to pay for it, whether it's maintenance or, you know, people that have to be there for it. And I just, you know, again, we're trying to be as astute as we can with this budget. And anytime we waive a fee, somebody else has to pay, and it's not fair to them either. But we need to look at the policy and restructure it, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions for staff? And if not, are there any motions in regard to this item? Counsel Allgood.
I move that we approve the, whatever the official term is, allow them to have the waiver.
Okay, very good. So that'd be a motion for approval of the resolution for the fee waiver request. Is there a second?
A second.
So it's a motion from Counsel Allgood and a second from Counsel Register. Any discussion on that motion? Okay. With that then, voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, the voting is closed, and that motion does pass unanimously. And that will move us into action item number six, which is the finance report.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Allgood.
I move that accounts payable, the amount of three million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-nine cents, represented by check numbers one eight six, two oh three, through one eight six, four eight five, and electronic payments and payroll for the amount of, oh, they didn't put any decimal points in here, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents, represented by check numbers three nine nine, six eight, through three nine nine, eight nine, and direct deposits be accepted, payments approved, and vouchers filed in the office of the city clerk.
Do you have a second? It's a motion from Counsel Allgood and a second from Counsel Stoddick. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. We didn't need a phone call vote on, that was just the finance report, right? Okay. Okay, very good. That moves us into council comments. So tonight, we will begin with Counsel Stoddick and move down. So, okay, very good, good one to start with. Nothing there either. Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. We haven't heard any more about the county's request for us to vacate Albany either. Is that a moot point, or are they abandoning that request? Albany goes through to, I believe, sixteen, and so I'm really not in favor of that, but I want to be sure that hasn't been, nothing's moved on that, I hope, because we denied that.
I'll turn that over to Haley.
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Williams. I've been continuing to work with the planning department. Joe Dodson is working on that case. And so our next step was that we are evaluating how much it would cost if the county were to purchase the right-of-way, rather than for us to just vacate it and give it to the county. So they're evaluating the property a little bit more closely so that they can associate a price to it. And then my understanding is at that time, they would want to bring it back to council for reconsideration.
Yep, sure. Counsel Allgood.
I have nothing to add.
Counsel Dittenberg.
Mr. Mayor, if I understand the text that we all got, that the Mono just won the James Beard Award.
Oh, did it?
So, we have a great restaurant in our community, great things going on, had a great time at Prime on the Plaza this last week, and glad to see Roger Brooks in town.
Very good. And Counsel Doughty.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Prime on the Plaza was a success. Looks like helping out our destination Caldwell, as always, as well as the great budget hearings we had last week. So with that, I'm ready to make a motion, or to go into executive whenever you're ready.
Very good, yes. Appreciate that. So, I don't really have much to add, just, yes, lots of great things happening. As you know, that Fred Meyer's been announced, we're super excited for that, for them to be coming to town, should break ground before the end of this year, we're hoping November on that. And again, at the Home Depot, it's exciting, they're moving along really, really well. And we expect to have other exciting announcements in the near future as well. So it's just, things are really going great, so we appreciate that. And then also, just to note that we do have tomorrow evening, an opportunity for the public to come down and to have some discussion regarding the West Valley Humane Society contract that did come, that is, before council, they came and spoke, as you're aware, about a month ago, and kind of stated their case and the amount of money that they wish to have increased by the city. And so we're hoping that there can be discussion with them. And I know there, it was kind of an ultimatum on their part, we're hoping we can work together, maybe see what we can do to make that work on both sides. So the intent on that, just so you're aware, so we will have our chief, Chief Ingram, and Ray Lynn, discuss that to begin, to provide some information to the council, but also to the people that will be here in attendance. The intent is to allow people to come and speak. We will be very, make sure they know that, we expect a good amount of people, so we want to have as many people speak as possible. So there'll be three-minute limit. And we do intend to begin with the citizens of Caldwell first. So we'll be checking that when they come in, just because they are obviously the taxpayers in Caldwell. So we want to make sure that they have opportunity to speak, as they're the ones that at the end of the day, whatever decision is, they're going to foot the bill. So we want to give them that opportunity to speak. And then after that, we'll allow the others to have a chance to speak, whether at that meeting or the one on June thirtieth. So again, that'll be here tomorrow evening, six PM to eight thirty PM, and we will have the last person speak at that time. And as I mentioned, we'll be coming back again the thirtieth to allow for those that don't have the chance to speak that night. And then we'll give an opportunity for council at the end, also push your thoughts and opinions as well at the end, to get us out of here before nine o'clock, as long as you all don't talk for more than an hour or so. So, anyway, just, that's all that I had. So with that, then we can stand for a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Doughty.
And I apologize, because you threw off the rhythm there, so I almost cut you off.
No problem.
So, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section seventy-four two oh six, Section D, for the purpose of discussing records that are exempt from disclosure provided in Chapter One, Title seventy-four Idaho Code, and executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section seventy-four two oh six, Section F, for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, or there is a general public awareness of probable litigation.
Very good, we have a second.
Second.
Motion from Counsel Doughty and a second from Counsel Stoddick to go into executive session.